...to help us to attract and grow as a community, attract new businesses and new employers, and offer that potential for positive growth. So from our vantage point, that's really the issue as opposed to just literally the nuts and bolts of it.
Right. And I completely, as a small business owner in the years since ninety-one, you know, I definitely appreciate that being a priority and, you know, absolutely, you don't want to help in any way that I can.
And I don't know if Brett Bielek is still with the change over in administration, whether he still had economic development for the state. But whoever it is, if you could sort of whisper in their ear that when they get approached by companies that are looking to expand or grow in Massachusetts, that they keep Tuxbury front of mind as, you know, community, that it could be beneficial to them.
I'll meet with the new secretary and I'll bring it to his attention.
Mr. Pennell.
Yeah, I would just add specifically, if there's any guidance, certainly with your access to the administration, our Economic Development Committee has certainly made the economic development aspect of Route thirty-eight a focus. And so any guidance as to key points to go after that may put us to that front of that line because I'm sure every other community in the Commonwealth is also looking for those sorts of funds as well. And so anything that differentiates us would be obviously appreciated to help us get to the front of that.
Well, I promise you that I will make sure that they are well aware of what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the second item on our list, no surprise, and to some degree you've already addressed it, but we had in a kind of a global bucket, the whole topic of local aid. You know, in the letter I wrote to you way back when, whenever that was, February eighteen, we spoke of our board's goal of maintaining at least current levels of fiscal fifteen and improving the picture potentially for fiscal sixteen. So at least out of the gate, from the perspective of the proposed governor's budget, we're certainly in a better place than when this letter was drafted. So I want to recognize that and obviously your comments indicate that hopefully we'll be able to maintain that and you certainly will support that. We, you know, are always in all likelihood going to be in the position of no matter what the state does from a local aid perspective, being in a position of saying to you, it's still not quite enough. And, you know, I'm going to say that to you anyways, while we fully appreciate that effort.
I agree.
We want to move the ball forward. We have, in the next fiscal year, we were in a situation relative to our school system that required some creative budgeting. And we are very fortunate as a community that we were able to cobble the resources together to make that a reality. Unfortunately, unlike the governor who said, "I'm not going to withdraw funds from the stabilization fund," in order for us to make it work at a local level, we had to make the difficult choice to potentially move forward and do just that. It's not something we want to be doing, but we had no alternative. So that leads us to the whole issue, and I think there's a meeting next week or later this week with the school department, I believe you're going to speak in that. So I don't want to monopolize this discussion tonight on that subject, but the whole subject matter of circuit breaker relief and special education costs and out-of-district transportation expenses are certainly focus points for this community and our school administration. And as a board, we're certainly cognizant of the rising pressure, if you will, and I think it's, you know, certainly not just limited to Tuxbury, it seems like potentially a statewide problem, thus perhaps a legislative issue that needs to be tended to. But whatever you can do to support us in those efforts, I'm going to leave it to my school colleagues to really advocate more specifically to those items when you meet with them later in the week. But that's an issue that's actually causing some pain for Tuxbury right now into the next fiscal year. We really can't find ourselves twelve months from now in the same spot because the resources that we have to solve the problem for the next twelve months are not repeatable.
Right.
So to that end, you know, some vision and forward thinking on the part of the state legislature and anything you can do to encourage that discussion would be great.
We had, as I mentioned, we had a meeting with the governor a week ago, and that, the whole issue that you're talking about was front and center legislators from around, the Republican legislators from around the state. And I'm sure he's met with Democrats also, but that issue has been front and center and the impact that it's having on our communities. And so he's aware of it. I think we're going to try to come up with some proposals that are going to make things better. Do we have the answers today? No, we don't. But it is something. The difference, interestingly, I was up in Boxford last night, and the difference between just what's going on in Beacon Hill, even my Democratic colleagues say, geez, I, we have a governor now that actually interacts with the legislature and discusses what are the issues that you're concerned about. As one Democratic colleague said, "I've been in here for eight years, I've never even said hello to Governor Patrick. Governor Baker is making himself accessible to everybody, and he's hearing exactly what you just said, Mr. Jim, that, you know, there's some real issues out here." So we're, we'll keep going with it and, you know, the more you let us know and the more our communities let us know, the better we are because we have an administration that's listening.
Terrific. And we appreciate your stewardship of those things. I don't, before I move on, I want to offer my colleagues because I don't want to monopolize the discussion, but are there any comments in that area? Okay. So we'll move to the third item that we had on our list, which is really very microscopic in terms of assistance to Tuxbury. We, with your assistance and those of our fellow delegation members, we've been able over the last few years to sort of correct some legislative issues relative to Livingston Street properties and also Tuxbury Cemetery. As you probably are aware, the cemetery is running out of land, and we've had some legislation passed that would allow for a land swap, if you will, with the state, which would allow us to relieve the pressure at the cemetery. Livingston Street, in some respects, is the heart of Tuxbury from an activity perspective. All of our sporting fields are down there and recreational use is down that way. And over the years, we've had the issue of having proper title and deed to that property and how to maintain it, who's responsible. So we've made a lot of headway, but unfortunately, as we closed in on the end of calendar fourteen, D-Cam kind of put the brakes on, quite frankly. And we haven't, at least to my knowledge, maybe you can fill in some blanks, but have we had any further communications?
Until last meeting?
Yeah. Zero? Yeah. So we're essentially at a point, Representative Lyons, where you've done your job, thankfully we can appreciate that, and legislation was passed. We believe we've done our job, and what has to happen is we've got to connect the dots and get things over the finish line. What we are led to believe is there's some administrative hurdles, some agreements about maintaining different aspects, fencing, things of that nature, that quite frankly shouldn't be holding us up.
Right.
We're all in agreement that needs to be done. We agree as a community and leadership of the town that we want to do those things. So there's no disagreement. There is, unfortunately, probably a little bit of a bureaucratic hangup. So any, I know there's probably changes in leadership that's going to cause potentially some delay because people have to get up to speed, but it's an area that we're like this close to getting it over the finish line. So your assistance in that we got specifically as it relates to Livingston Street would be huge. As to the cemetery, we have a little bit of a funding problem. I'm not sure how much aware you are of that issue, but in the X years that it's taken to go from an agreement to getting legislation passed, the value of the appraisal has moved from, I think it's about ninety thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And from our vantage point, that's just kind of punitive in the sense that we had an agreement in place, the value was put in place, the cemetery trustees were willing and prepared to contribute to that solution, and because of delay and inaction, and we take our share of the way by, quite frankly, as well. But because nothing has been finalized, we're now staring down a bill that's two or three times what it was originally. We need to fix that. I know this legislation that's been filed, at least as a draft form.
Seems to me, as I mentioned to Representative Muselli, it seems more like an administrative thing, a thing that's going to need all kinds of legislation. This letter that you sent me, I met with the governor's legislative director and gave him this list about two weeks ago, asked him to review it, and, you know, when Jim and I go in and talk, those are the priorities. They're going to have a couple, you know, a couple of weeks ahead of, you know, schedule to have him reviewed it, and I found him to be very responsive, and that's, that's one of them to me, it just seems like, you know, to have to go through all the legislative process, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
We're so close to getting this done. It's been, I don't know how many years, since the sixties, I think, that Livingston Street property has been sort of out there with a question mark on it. So if we can make headway, that would be a very positive sign with the new administration, we can clear that roadblock out of the way.
They're aware of it. You know, Jim and I are going to go meet with them and, you know, Jim can be somewhat persuasive, as you know, sometimes.
Indeed.
So, yeah, you know, we will definitely, you know, that's the other issue, the legislative, we've got two issues, the bond bill and the piece of legislation.
Yep. Okay. So item four deals with really kind of outside-the-box thinking. We're, and we've had very positive discussions with Representative Muselli, who I would say, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but, you know, a year or two years ago was very skeptical about this subject. More recently, when he sat in the chair, he was sitting and said, "I'm convinced and I'm going to try to find a solution for you." I'm sure he's conveyed that to you. But the implications of having such a large state entity like the state hospital in Tuxbury, on the whole, very positive for Tuxbury. Historically, the relationship has been great. You know, many, many Tuxbury residents have been employed or used services there. So in no way, shape, or form are we trying to malign the hospital at all, I just want to make that absolutely clear. They're a valued employer, a valued contributor to our community. But with being as big as they are and coupled with the financial constraints that the town has been faced with for quite some time, every time we make a public safety run up there, whether it's ambulance, fire, or in many cases, police-driven, it diminishes the ability of our public safety departments to serve the rest of the community, to the point that in the past few years, we've had partial closures of our fire station in South Tuxbury. And when that has occurred and we're down to two stations, if there's a call up at the state hospital, the rest of Tuxbury is being served by one station. So as we wrestle with that and our desire to serve our community in the full fashion that they deserve, it leads us to trying to find some creative ways to mitigate that expense so we can retain the service for the balance of the community who right, effectively are paying for it through their real estate taxes. So we need some help there. I don't know what the answer is, I don't think my colleagues really fully have a sense of what the solution is, but what we're trying to do is create a bridge of discussion with the administration at the state hospital. We've had some very positive, eye-opening discussions, but to the extent that you can help us with that, it's ultimately a money issue to some degree, but we need to find some creative ways to kind of chip away at that.
So the question that I had, you haven't looked at that, do we have a dollar run?
We do.
Okay.
And we can provide you, I think we've given it to Representative Muselli, but we'll follow up with you. We will give you the number of runs and the cost of that from the standpoint of how that is billed to health providers, what that costs, and then we can back into some of the more specific public safety-related expenses.
Okay. If you give me that, that'll give me a place to go.
We can quantify.
And I'll definitely, I'll definitely raise that issue also. I mean, clearly, it's an added expense that every community in the, doesn't have, and I think it's a valid request within public safety. We'll definitely try, we will definitely try.
And Brett Muselli said that he was going to see if he could set up a meeting with Jay Ash, I don't know who that is.
Yeah, he's, yeah.
Let me see if there's any access to funding now that he's seen, now that he's seen the numbers and seen the cost to us, but there's, you know, there's a hard cost and then there's, as Chairman stated, there's the, there's the potential for the lost opportunity cost because there's an ambulance up there going to Lowell General and they're not in Tuxbury anymore because of that. So there, you know, there's certainly the tangible costs and then the intangible costs that we'll face there.
Definitely. You know, we'll try to come up with, you know, perhaps some kind of legislative language. One of the things that the governor's doing in his budget, it hasn't really, I don't know whether you folks heard about it, but he's putting together this whole, this big pile of money for grants as opposed to dictating them in different areas, and that could be an area that we could start to look at.
Sure.
Is some of this new, he's putting aside X amount of dollars for grants for local communities who have specific, special requests, and seems to me off the top of my head that that would certainly be a place that we could look at, you know. So, you know, yeah, I'll get, I'll see Jim, Representative Muselli tomorrow, whatever information, we'll follow up and get that, and we'll try to come up with some kind of language, working with the town manager to try to do something.
And that's a very positive comment. I commend that sort of outside-the-box or different approach to thinking about it because that's exactly what we're looking for.
Right.
A different methodology that isn't, well, it doesn't fit in this box, so the game's over.
Right.
If there's a way to get to that.
With the thirty, there's a thirty-eight billion dollar budget being spent. I think my job as your advocate on Beacon Hill is to try to, first of all, understand what your needs are, and then to go in there and especially given the fact that we have a governor who's made the priorities of communities, you know, let's take advantage of this opportunity. So eight years from now, we're looking at, you know, what you're saying today becomes part of what's real in the town of Tuxbury.
Awesome. Now, before I move on, you mentioned grants, and I just, my recollection is a little fuzzy, but there was a very key, like sixty thousand dollar grant. Is that still hanging fire?
The governor's slated legislation. It's fine. It's not the show. The number isn't.
And, okay, so what I like to do is get Rep. Lyons the detail on that because that, that's about sixty thousand in Tuxbury, and we don't have the resources to replace it. It's a grant for our police department, and it was originally slated to go away. So if the governor's put some bill in to fund it again, terrific, but your support, stewardship of that would be.
It's a nine-one-one grant, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that's used to fund the salaries of the dispatchers.
Dispatcher salary. So we'll follow up with you on that. The next item that is a driving issue here in town, and has been for quite some time and unfortunately will be for quite some time, is the issue of sewer and water rates. And later on, you know, we'll talk about rates for next year, but as you know, Tuxbury has invested literally a hundred million dollars in its sewer infrastructure over the last ten years or so, and we've put a substantial sum into our water infrastructure, we're embarking on a water treatment plant upgrade in the near future here. What we're looking for is, again, similar to the last item, is really creative thinking. There was a fund that the state had, I think it was victimized by the nine C cuts, but very small sum.
Right.
That was a statewide benefit. And I've mentioned to Representative Muselli and Senator Feingold in the past, you know, that Tuxbury's situation is somewhat unique. We committed literally a hundred million dollars to infrastructure, unlike many other communities. So to follow on what you just said about, you know, specific grants that are for unique sets of circumstances, this kind of falls in that same bucket. We need to find some relief, you know, for seniors, you know, returning veterans. We're looking for ways to affect that cost to our community, which is really directing, you know, some of the resources that we can better deploy. We have no choice, we have to honor this obligation.
Right.
So, you know, thoughts and any kind of creative thinking in that area, much appreciated.
There is currently a statute related to abatement for the sewer debt portion of the person's tax bill, but it was written, I think, in ninety-three. And so the income levels were fixed at that point, and they're to now a point where a person on, a single person on social security is making too much money to take advantage of those abatements. And so it may be, it may be a legislative fix to just simply bring those numbers to a reasonable level based on inflation and then index them in some way so that, you know, the issue's fixed in perpetuity, but.
Yeah, we certainly can look at that. The thought that came, you know, as we've talked about it and I've thought about it since you sent me the letter, and, you know, I've heard other people that have called me about, you know, the impact on the water and sewer pair in town.
Sure.
Aware of it. If, maybe you can help, Richard, on this. If a community now is going to go out and do that kind of huge project, which is a very big project, would they be able to access any, any kind of state money to do that?
For our water treatment thing, we apply to the state of all we find, for the no interest homes.
Okay. You would deny it? Okay. You would deny it when?
I'm sure the last couple, the last couple. So it's very limited, I mean, there's no grants out there.
Yeah. What about water, what if a community wanted to put new sewer lines in, you know, nothing out there?
Nothing.
So there's no incentive at the, right now at the state level to incentivize communities to do what the building code now wants everything to do?
Well, everything is tied to, it's tied to economic development, creation of jobs, creation of housing.
Yeah.
There's a strong chance of getting infrastructure work done.
Okay.
But the whole days of grants.
It's not there yet.
Sewer rate, we gave cities and towns money years ago, but I think the last time, we apply every year, and every year it's cut, and one year we did get about five thousand dollars.
Yeah. You know, you mentioned Jay Ash, you know, he's somebody that, you know, I'll make sure that this is a topic that we discuss and, you know, as you say, we'll ask them to give us some creative ways. See if you get a community that made that kind of investment, is there a way for us to, you know, to help that community, you know? So we'll definitely put it on the table and try to, you know, let people be aware of what we're looking to do.
Thank you. We do appreciate that as well.
Brett, you talked about the governor putting aside some funds for those grants and people applying for those and the people who are based upon need. When that happens, can you make a point to let us know what grants are available so we can, you know, be proactive for us so we can, we can find out what grants are available and see if anything fits with what we need so we can start that grant writing process?
Absolutely. We'll definitely make sure that you folks are aware of everything that comes to the front side of this.
Okay.
Definitely.
Thank you. So let me get to the last item on our wishlist, if you will. And this is sort of a pet peeve of mine, important item, but I believe there's a statewide issue, but, you know, if we're not able to address it at that level, certainly at the local level here in Tuxbury, I think some help from the state would go a long, long way. And basically, the issue is this, Representative Lyons, our public library is a valued asset in our community. We were forced a number of years ago when our budgets were way out of whack to cut the library budget by about eighteen percent. In order to maintain our accreditation, we have to show a maintenance of effort. And that specifically applies to books and periodicals and also hours that the library is open. We've made strides as a community to eat into that eighteen percent cut. Each year, in the last few years, we've made some headway, to the point this year, for example, in our proposed fiscal sixteen budget, we're going to hire a teen librarian at the cost of roughly sixty thousand dollars or so?
A little bit less.
A little bit less than that. So some number in that range, but that doesn't have a positive impact on how the Board of Library Commissioners views Tuxbury's spending relative to its library commitment. And when we step back and think about where we were, what I understand from our library director is that we would literally have to commit approximately two hundred thousand dollars to books and periodicals to make up for that, you know, seven or eight-year commitment level to get us current and off of a waiver status. Well, that quite frankly is an impossibility because we have fire to deal with and police to deal with and schools to deal with, and as a priority, it's just not a conceivable road for us to go down that we could take two hundred thousand dollars off the top and make good on that. So we need to find a way to, like, create an amnesty program, if you will, that says, "Look, there were dire economic circumstances, and for libraries that are now in a positive commitment level, that we're going to let you requeue at this level that you are in fiscal fifteen, for example, and we're going to hold you to that commitment moving forward, but we're not going to continuously keep you in a default mode because of something that happened four, five, six years ago." It makes no sense, and there's no ability for a town like Tuxbury, while we're now putting more money into our library than we have in the last five or six years, that we can't make up for that deficit. We've got to make some headway. So I view it as a statewide issue because I know Tuxbury's not the only public library in that mode. Every library that has a waiver status is essentially in the same mode. There are, by contrast, communities that have said, "We're not building a new public library, we don't care to have a new library, we're going to live with our hundred-year-old library," but they put fifteen thousand into their book budget and they get the state grant, whereas we have a jewel downstream. And we've made the commitment and we've done everything we possibly can, but because the economy tanked on everybody, we're in a more difficult situation. So we need to either look at this as a statewide problem, and thus I ask you to consider that, but lacking change on a statewide level, certainly as it relates to Tuxbury, consideration as it pertains to the Board of Library Commissioners would go a long way if there's either some form of an amnesty program or some retooling of the measurements or metrics that are used to warrant that state support. If we lose our accreditation, Tuxbury library cardholders can literally only borrow books from the Tuxbury Public Library, they can't go to the consortium of libraries throughout the Merrimack Valley. It's a huge impact. As I'm sure you appreciate, our library is being used more now than ever before. People are there, you know, looking for jobs, they're using our computers over there to access information on the internet. It's a huge resource for people, and yet we're on the verge of losing our accreditation year after year after year.
So we had a similar problem with Boxford, we had a meeting last, since last week, similar almost, I mean, I don't know whether it's, you know, apples to apples.
I didn't talk to them.
But, so, I guess what I want to be able to do is if we were to wave a magic wand and we got in front of the folks who make these decisions, we could specifically tell them exactly what the town of Tuxbury wants, and this, and we could write it, right? You could say, "Jim, this is what we need, this is what they want us to do, and this is what we can do, and we don't want to be under this threat every single year."
Correct.
So if you, if you could.
We'll do that.
You give me exactly what it is that you want, you wave your magic wand, and we will go to the commissioners and to the specific person that we talked to in, for the Boxford situation, and we'll bring it right to their attention. You give me that letter and we will go to them.
We'll put it in writing, but the short answer is measure the town's commitment to maintenance of effort on current fiscal year spending, not against a standard that was established five or six or seven years ago.
Right, but which.
Take this as the baseline, and then moving forward, hold me to the same level I need to have, whatever the requirement is, three percent spending on top of that next year.
Now, that seems like a reasonable approach.
Very straightforward. I don't think we're asking.
Be happy to, I mean.
That's really, that's the solution.
Yeah, then you give me that solution and I will go meet with them and advocate for that.
I don't know if my colleagues have further comments.
Is that all right?
Yeah, it's perfect.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So again, what we tried to do, and again, I wanna appreciate your presence with us and certainly the spirit of cooperation that, you know, you've brought to the table. These issues are things that I know have driven a lot of our discussions and are really our focus points. So to the level that we can collaborate with you and answer questions, provide information such as what you just asked for, you have our commitment certainly to partner with you in that effort. And I hope that maybe a year from now, instead of six of these items, we're talking maybe about three and we've replaced another three with something that's more relevant to, you know, something that might occur in the next few months.
So why don't we do this, maybe we could, you know, make it part of our routine, we're, it's March, we'll come back again in October.
Awesome.
See what kind of progress we're making, see what kind of input we've had with the administration in that six or seven month period. You know, that way you guys can say, Jim, what the heck are you doing? You told us you were gonna do this and you didn't. And that will keep my feet to the fire.
Yeah, it's actually a good time because it's right after town meeting for us too, so we have our priorities moving forward.
Because I really do, I mean, I know, you know, I know it's a Republican governor, I get all that, but I think the sense on Beacon Hill is that there is, there is really change happening, you know, among Democrats and Republicans. So I think it's a real opportunity to try to, I mean, the request that you're making about the library seems almost like a no-brainer. Do you know what I mean? I mean, why do we have somebody interfering with the fact that we had difficult times? Let's change it and move forward. I mean, it's just, and I think that the spirit of cooperation that I think is going to be there will allow us to take care of some of these things. So I really, you know, Jim was sitting.
Yep. You have an open invitation, if there's something on your mind that you wanna share with this board, whether it's communicated, you know, electronically or by telephone or if you're, I will extend, I know my colleagues would agree, anytime you wanna come back here to talk with us, we'll make that a reality, but we will definitely take you up on your offer and have, you know, maybe in a number of months, five or six months, have you come back and we can kind of give ourselves a mutual report card.
That'd be great. So what I'll do is we'll send kind of a recap of what we did tonight and kind of put in place kind of the timeline as to, you know, how we're gonna address each one of the issues. You know, administration and finance on one issue, you know, the transportation issue with whoever we have to deal with there, we'll go right down the list and then we'll try to set up some meetings and see how much progress we can make over the next fifteen years.
Anything you need from us, we're here to attend meetings, advocate for whatever we need alongside you, so don't hesitate to pull those levers.
No, I appreciate it. And as I said, Representative Muselli and Senator Lutti have made it clear that they wanna work together to get these issues moving down the road.
Awesome. Brett, one of the things in front of mind for us is snow and ice removal and the fact that we've blown, we've blown our budget as many other towns and town manager sent us some information that we could put in the reimbursement information to MEMA. So if there's anything that you can do from a state level with MEMA to maximize that reimbursement to Tuxbury, it's certainly gonna benefit us in terms of our snow and ice budget.
Absolutely.